Or less, you could get down to nothing.
No, that was my thought.
Yeah, so.
We had that note, we're gonna build a floor in.
Right, okay.
What type of floor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to talk about a different topic. Okay, so I saw something that came up with the Ulrika project, or changing names now, or something anyway, about walkways going over the courtyard areas. And so there was some concern for, because they could connect the upper units of residential units above the commercial through using the walkways. But I think the planning commission didn't like the connections. I'm not sure why, if there's something.
It wasn't that they didn't like the connections, it was a conversation about, because we have regulations about how many square feet a single building can be. So there was a discussion about whether connecting the walkways then made two buildings, which on the ground floor are split, if that then makes those one total building. So it wasn't that they liked or didn't like the walkways.
Does it, does it, does it cause a problem at all for the open spaces, having walkways going over it?
If they're, if they're totally enclosed, perhaps, but the, in that case, they weren't totally enclosed, they were just on the edges of the buildings. But like, there, there are, you know, walkways that have total enclosure, like you can think of the one, our inner block walkway that goes back like, through like, the Clint Eastwood building, Hogs Breath, there's, that's totally enclosed. The one that goes back to the Thomas Kincaid Art Gallery. So it's not, it's not unheard of to have enclosed walkways, or at least partially enclosed.
So I'm wondering if, because I think there were like catwalks and crosses going across the open spaces, does that apply to that as well as it being enclosed or not enclosed?
I guess I don't understand the question at that point. It may, it may have some, some crossing over the top of it, but I don't, I don't think that's an issue, it's not really addressed in any way in the.
Like bridges, bridges between the buildings, you know.
Is it the same for the courtyard, it's open sky?
Yeah, everything's open, but there's. Everything would be open, but the buildings are connected by little bridges that go over the open spaces, and is that an issue for that? Can they do that, or is that not allowed, is the question?
Yeah, the answer is it's allowed right now.
I think it's possible that you're asking, or just correct me if I'm wrong, are you asking, David, whether it's an aesthetic or quality of life issue to say that a courtyard has a partial roof, basically? So if it's not, this is what you're hinting at, Doug, if it's, is it a courtyard if it starts to get covered, or is the, or is that part no longer really the courtyard, because now it's roofed? What is the definition of a courtyard? Does it go to the sky, or is it, is it, does it have some covering?
Well, I think we need to have a definition of a courtyard, because there's a project pending which identifies the courtyard, which identifies the walkways as courtyards. So it's 10 feet in width, which is really the walkway through the complex, but they have identified as courtyards.
Now you're raising an additional issue, I think, which is, but I mean, what he's saying is, how does it count? In other words, if you are having to have a walkway, an intra-block walkway, as probably be part of a density bonus, and then you're also saying you have a courtyard, but really, the courtyard is the walkway, are you, are you kind of double counting?
So the bonuses for like, inner block walkways and courtyards are not, you know, you have to have so many square feet of inner block walkway, or so many square feet of courtyard. So it's not a, there's not a calculation where like, you can game a system by double counting like a walkway and a courtyard. It just has to exist, yeah.
Total space.
That's right, the, the inner block walkway has to exist, and that's, that was, if you remember, one of the previous conversations with the planning commission about the Ulrika Plaza project, is, the conversation centered around, is it a true inner block walkway because of where it connects, where it comes in and goes out? It wasn't about how much open space there is, or whether there was a walkway above it, or anything like that, there, because that's not what the code gets to for a lot, for giving the bonuses for having inner block walkway, it's that it is an inner block walkway. So unless the code changed and said you had to have, you know, X percentage of square feet be open, or whatever, that, they just wouldn't be relevant, right now, anyway.
Okay, so we have two, still two kind of issues here. One, I think Brandon has addressed by saying that really it's just the total square footage, no matter what you call it, that's how the bonus is, is calculated, on the ground. But here's another worst-case scenario exercise. Let's say you had a tunnel that connected the blocks, and across, instead of catwalks, you had actually solid building. Now maybe that's possible, I mean, again, and let's not think about Ulrika Plaza, because the regulations for that have been looked at many different directions. But let's say somebody's trying to get credit for walking you correctly to good points through the block, but it's entirely not open sky. Tell us about, okay, go ahead.
What is the courtyard definition?
I'm, I'm trying to find it.
Okay, let's look at that, because that could solve it.
Yeah, so, but Brandon, you, I mean, I don't, that's maybe in a scenario that hasn't come up, but you could totally imagine it coming up. If I get credit for just making a, subtracting square footage on the ground floor, but I get full square footage above, and then that goes to David's point, to what extent is something that's in between those two things, a violation of the intent, or not? So if it's a partial covering, there's still pretty good light, but it's still kind of covered, is that, is that really now getting away from the definition of an open sky?
So I haven't found the definition of a courtyard yet, but I did stumble across, like, the actual incentive that exists. It says courtyards, inter, let's see, a floor area bonus of up to 10% may be granted for projects that include a courtyard and/or inner block walkway. So either, either a courtyard or an inner block walkway, and it's a 10% floor area bonus. I'll keep looking for the courtyard definition, but.
I think we're talking about roofs now, over a courtyard, in a way.
Yeah, whether, whether that.
So the 10% density bonus is for walkways and courtyards. So then it comes to what's the functionality of a courtyard? Which.
So, this is in 1714. A courtyard is an open space on private property that is linked to an adjoining sidewalk or walkway in such a manner as to encourage public access. It must be enclosed on at least two sides by buildings, and must remain open to the sky. To qualify for floor area bonuses provisions, the minimum width of courtyard shall be 20 feet, and the minimum area shall be 400 square feet. So there you go.
So just the walkways? So just the walkways that cover over, if, I mean, because there could be a lot, you know, that amount of square footage would not be counted for the, the walkways or the open space, because it's covered? I don't know, it could just, it could be a lot. I mean, it could be more than a walkway, you know, it could be a whole terrace, or something.
So maybe while, while we're speaking of this, we talk about, just so I'm following properly, I think you're talking about upper floor walkways. When you say walkway, intra-block walkways are on the ground floor. Although you could imagine one that goes up and down, that's purely for going up a grade, or something like that. So yours, when you say walkway, you're saying upper floor, upper story walkways, that could impinge on the countability of the lower floor open space?
Because they cover.
Because they cover. I bet you that that has not been considered for this Ulrika thing, by the way, that's my guess.
So, again, it's either a courtyard or an inner block walkway. So either one counts for the 10% bonus. An inner block walkway is a publicly, publicly accessible ground-level pedestrian path providing a connecting route between two or more different streets around a block. Such walkways are often coordinated with courtyards, and may involve more than one property ownership to complete. To qualify for floor area bonus provisions, the minimum width of an inner block walkway shall be four feet, has no provisions that it requires open space for the inner block walkway. So an inner block walkway could be a tunnel, it could be completely enclosed, it could be partially enclosed by walkways above, so either way, I mean, to talk about this specific project, it's fine, but, yeah.
So, I think the question on the table is, is that okay? Is it okay that the courtyard is required to be open space? They both get you density bonuses.
You don't get 10, you don't get 20%, it's one or the other. It's either. The way, the way the code is written, you don't get 10% for a courtyard, and 10% for an inner block walkway. Okay.
No, I get it, but you can choose to call your thing an intra-block walkway, and therefore not have the open sky provision. This is all I'm saying, and I'm.
That's why it's called courtyard.
So same bonus doesn't, you can mix and match the type of square footage, but if you choose to call it in your project, an intra-block walkway, then it will not, it can have a ceiling, the things above it can be connected, is that the intent? I mean, I'm just curious, from a design standpoint, is that the intent of an intra-block walkway? David?
I would say that I don't think it, it is, as far as, you know, what people's opinions are in general, because if we look at, you know, the, the pit, one of the latest ones, they wanted it to break it up into four different structures, to make it feel smaller and stuff. I think the intention is to try and make the buildings feel smaller, more human scale, and that they are not just one single big building. So I think that they're wanting things to be, you know, separated, and, and not, just like, create a tunnel through a building, you know, so that they, you know, get some benefit.
I don't know, I think, I think the inner block courtways, court walkways, to me, should be open. I mean, I think it's too claustrophobic, it's too, it creates, I don't know, I don't get a warm, friendly feeling. Maybe, you know, if you had like, a trellis, or something like that, that's different than if it's like, a roof. I mean, I can't, I have a hard time with that. I just think, you know, it should be like a courtyard, it should be an open, you know, pleasing, pedestrian-friendly type thing, and I, somehow, when I think about a covered walkway, I just don't, I don't, I don't get that feeling. Because you'll have buildings on either side, and it'll be, I think, just, you know, too claustrophobic.
And again, there could be a distinction, and like, this is now getting into a little bit of a regulatory matter, obviously, but there could be a distinction between the type of inner block walkway, that's a gimme, it could be anything, it could be a tunnel, it's just a sneaky way around something, and one that qualifies as an official intra-block walkway, and comes with benefits, like density bonuses. So.
It's an aesthetic thing, too. I mean, it's aesthetic, as well as, I mean, just, it might even be a safety issue, in a way, you know? Because when you have like, a tunnel effect, people don't think it's warm and inviting for a whole lot of different reasons, so, I mean, I suppose there could be a time when it, when it, you know, when it works well, but I just, I just find it unpleasing for Carmel.
It's possible that we haven't had this problem, and therefore it's not addressed. We haven't had it very often.
Page five, 3.4.1, the Sioux Vessino Court. Okay, it looks like, between the two streets, between Lincoln and Delores, the building spans over the pedestrian walk. Okay. Then on the following page, at 3.5.1, is the trellis.
Yeah, the trellis is because it's still light, and it's, and it's, you know, a very, it's, it's a, you know, it's a tree in a building, not a, not a purpose setting.
So that one's okay?
Yeah.
Even though we have an X on it?
Well, that's because, that's because of the utility box.
But not this one. I'm just trying to follow your thought process. The Sioux Vessino one.
Yeah, that's open, that's, that's fine.
No, 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 that actually has a covered walkway, when you go under, and so I also think that, that partially covered, actually, I don't know how, what percentage, but this is very nice when it rains, and you can step out somewhere, and it, you have some covered areas, so.
To the two businesses, too. The cover goes over the two, two businesses, and also allows for a second store.
But it is an inter, a covered, intra-block walkway.
I don't consider it, I don't consider it, if you, this is what, this is the concept that I'm talking about. Open, and then the next page, open, as opposed to something totally covering the whole thing.
We're, we're talking about a certain percentage, right, that we may or may not want to have open. We're talking about the background of that.
Yeah, and the other side, and the other side of this, is what's open.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this does not bother me, that small amount of space that's covered, because it's being utilized as part of the building envelope, for, for the whole, for the whole.
So, I don't want to get us too confused, I think what we're talking about is a couple different things. We're talking about whether, this is sort of official definition that gets you bonuses, and that's the intra-block walkway, sort of regulatory piece. In other words, could a developer start to encroach so much on the lower floor, to maximize the upper story, that it destroys the aesthetic intent of an intra-block walkway? And therefore, we would want to clarify, potentially, that the part you get to count for an intra-block walkway bonus, density bonus, has to do with, maybe it's openness to the sky. Or, as Mary Ann sort of suggesting, in general, whether it's for the bonus, or for aesthetic reasons, maybe we should have some kind of definition, just like we do for, we're starting to try to develop or refine for the opening to the street, the opening to the sky. How much constitutes the definition of these, of these elements here? If you have an interior courtyard that has awnings or, or projections all around it, how much of that is the interior courtyard? Only the up part that's in the center? Okay, so we don't have clarity on that for the intra-block walkway, in my opinion, I think is what we're learning. It's what David brought up, is like, how much can you crisscross the top of this thing, before it is no longer a courtyard? And how much, you could do it 100%, and it still is legally defined as an, as an intra-block walkway. Maybe that's not great design, for our town. That's not what we think of as an intra-block walkway, in general. If it, if this building were to grow, this upper story, all the way over to the street, we probably wouldn't think of it that way anymore, as an intra-block walkway, even though it technically is. So that's something to throw in the hopper, for the, for the editing. This is exactly what I was looking for. Is there anything else that comes up, when people look at these first three things about four courts, courtyards, intra-block walkways, that needs to be addressed? Are you gonna say something, David? Yes?
I think it raises another issue, which we briefly touched on early in our existence, which is the density bonus. I mean, we have in our design guidelines about building forms, materials, and modesty and restraint, and it seems silly that you put an inner block walkway, and you get to build a bigger building.
I was also thinking, you know, it's so nice when a developer will put things like fountains, and things like that, in there that, you know, are not required. Maybe there could be some benefit, you know, for them, if they were to do something like that.
I, I think, like Sioux Vessino, I think that there's a loss of charm, sometimes, when you have wide walkways and sky above. I think that there are times when it's very charming to have part of it covered, at least, and then you come to open sky as a possibility. I don't want to restrict coverings, and, and reduce incentives, because somebody may have a covering over part of a walkway. I don't know that this is a problem, but I look at these very open spaces, and they don't appear as charming to me.
I was wondering, on that note, if, for example, somebody started putting balconies in these walkways, and stuff like that, maybe they would just have to make the walkways a little wider, so that they could get the numbers that they needed. Would that help? So that they could still have, like, shades coming out, or little balconies in these walkways, inner walkways going between the buildings? But they would have to make them a little bit wider, because they had these things, you know, that were protruding into the space. So that part wouldn't count, just the part that, that has a balcony over it, that part doesn't count, so they need to make it wider, to accommodate for that.
I, I think that would disincentivize people to put up awnings, and so forth. I kind of think this works, as it is.
I think, I think, in general, one of the reasons it's probably not addressed, is that it hasn't been too big of a problem. I do think it's a time to pick up some things here, that could become problems. Let me, let me summarize, so if we look at 3.4, 0.1, 2, and 0.2, 0.3, one of them, and for the four court, talks about actual percentages for how open the entry into the four court has to be. The second one, interior courtyard, does not talk about percentages. Intra-block walkways do not have also anything about the amount of covering, or what constitutes a walkway, in terms of the open sky. The courtyard, we found a definition that clarifies that it's open sky, so that's 100% taken care of, but we don't have any language here about what a minor break is constant, what is defined as a minor break. I don't even really know how people wrote this to begin with, frankly. I don't, when I look at this, I say, how, who decided, and how did they decide, that a four court has an opening of 30% or less? I don't, is that minor? Is that considered minor? Is that major, 30%? Is a four court a more major or minor entry-type sequence? Maybe, Brandon, you could tell me your impressions. This is all original, yeah.
I have no idea.
You don't know? We're all perplexed.
What'd you hear?
Okay, so, let's, let's take a stab at it. For, for a four court, which is directly facing onto the street, so they're, they're talking about, basically, something that, in fact, is this a four court? This brick one? That's, is, that's considered a four court? Okay. Because, because it's all open. So, it appears to me that they're, what they're trying to say is that, you know what, I don't even know if I understand, it's 30% or less of the, of what?
I have no idea. That's why they don't want to come, is it of the buildings on the entire block?
Right.
The parcel? Is it? Yeah. Seems like it would be a lot, but it doesn't say.
It could be the street wall, it could be the, the proportion of the space.
It's probably, it's probably.
The street wall, go ahead.
It's probably the lot, because it'd be difficult to tell somebody to regulate 30% of property that they don't control. So it would be, 30% of the lot that you control, on that street side, has to be open.
It could also, and that might be the right way to do it, you could imagine also that a four court, they're trying to get it to pinch, so that if you have a four court, that's 20, let's come up with an easy, 21 feet wide, only seven feet of it could be open. So in other words, it's proportion to the four court itself. I don't think that's what they mean, actually, I.
That's how I originally read it.
That's how I read it. Right. But I believe that the intent is probably about minimizing the amount of building that you dedicate to this opening. So I'm guessing that it means the lot width, and I don't, they're not trying to pinch the opening of the four court, they're trying to limit the width of the four court itself. Yeah, so it's basically, because, and the hint is, maintain the street wall. So, so they're basically talking about, not the opening, that's what I think is confusing, they're talking about the four court itself. Because the four court opens almost entirely onto the street, and they just don't want that to be too wide. Do people agree with that? I'm just throwing that out there.
30% of the lot width.
Right. So in order to maintain the street wall, does that make sense, as a four court?
I don't know, it seems clear to me, 30%, 30% of the street wall, that's what it says. So why are we?
Do we like it? I mean, is that, is that what, because, well, Brandon?
It's clear. It's clear. Or, so.
I don't know what the street wall is, what is the street wall?
That's the building facade.
So why don't we don't say building facade? What is street wall? Street wall, that's where I thought it meant enclosure of the courtyard. That's how I interpreted it, when it said street wall, you know? I didn't know they meant the building.
Right. Yes.
Question for Dawn. Do you have a rough idea, for Carmel Plaza on Ocean, what the four court is there, between khakis and the west end of the building?
Brandon?
Eighty feet, ladies and gentlemen.
Eighty feet of, the what?
It probably is about a third. If you think about the khakis facade, then that opening, then coach and more.
I think it's more, it's definitely more, yeah. It's more, yeah, yeah.
Compared, if you go all the way block to block?
I think so.
Okay, so maybe that was against the rules.
That plaza is against the rules.
But it probably depends on how many lots you have, too, as well. I mean, if you have two lots, maybe you want different percentages, if you have three or four lots.
But this is not, it's over 30%, that it's not maintain the street wall.
If it's a guideline, isn't, doesn't it allow the planning commission discretion?
Yeah, no, of course they have discretion, yeah.
So I, I think we're.
We're just trying to be clear, so that they don't have this to say.
Searching a rule, not a problem, I think.
The exercise is not necessarily to change the rule, it's, or the guideline, but to just see, is it clear enough, that the folks up there don't have to have this conversation that we're having now, they can just decide what they want to do with the street wall?
I think it might be clear to say facade, and also, I think it would be a good idea to say the minimum amount of opening. I mean, if we're just talking one single door, or we're, you know, we want something larger, so, might be an idea.
Okay, I'm starting, I feel like I'm starting to understand the intent of it a little bit better. I think they're basically saying, if it's a four court, don't make it too big, like Dawn did. Make it no more than a third, or 30% of the whole opening. And the four court itself is not terribly well-understood, in the senses, is it, is it, is the opening itself, at some point, it becomes a courtyard. At some point, you pinch the opening to the point where it becomes a courtyard. That is not really clear. But maybe it doesn't matter, what we call it, if it's a four court or a courtyard, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, honestly, I kind of tend to agree with Dawn, I think, I think, I think we got it.
Okay. So, and then the, the interior courtyard, limit the entrance to a minor break. Now, I think this goes more to Mary Ann's reading of the first, of the interior courtyard, which is that she thought, and I was thinking it could read this way, that we're talking about the proportion of the opening with respect to the, the interior space. And I think what we're saying, seeing here in interior courtyard, it says it's accessed by a narrow opening at the street, then the courtyard itself. So, a minor break in the street wall. So does anyone have any thoughts about codifying that, or at least giving guidance about what minor means? Minor break with inviting views, that's what they want.
I have a suggestion. I would suggest not trying to put a number on that. I mean, I think at some point, we have to trust that we've written the guidelines with enough direction, that the discretionary decision-makers, whether it's the DRB or the planning commission, they can take a word like minor, and they can figure that out for themselves. That's, just from a staff perspective, I think we're going too deep on that.
We also had, so, so what I, what we've identified today, so far, is just that the intra-block walkway may have a regulatory issue, which is that we may be giving bonuses for something that could be a tunnel, and we may not want to do that. And so that might need some addressing, in terms of its definitions. Nobody has a vision of an intra-block walkway as a tunnel. So, that's a real thing to look at. We also touched on, again, gates and lockability, and I don't know if we ever resolved that. Did people, I felt like, I think I weighed in, saying that. Did people, I felt like, I think I weighed in saying that an intra-block walkway is a gift to the public, that you get a bonus for. And so
We close parks at night, though. I mean, we close parks at dusk as well, and those are public lands.
Those are public property.
Yeah. So I would say private property has even more right to close their property. I don't see any rea- Yeah, if it's accessible during the day, their normal business hours for people. Like the one, the perfect example is the one that goes back towards the Thomas Kinkade Gallery. That closes down. I mean, there's rules about when it has to be open and closed. So I think that's, that's the note I had taken, is that we have rules about it being open to the public during normal business hours, but it doesn't have to be 24/7.
I think there was still some controversy around the table about, I don't know that, yes, it sounds like that's the accurate description of what we have. What I recall is folks talking about, you know, again, this is like, when we give the density bonus, it's like we're creating a sidewalk for ourselves, for the public.
We're becoming a partner.
We're becoming a partner, we give a bonus, we're asking for public access between blocks, and we're giving a gift for that, just like a sidewalk. And the sidewalk happens to split the block in particular places to get to someplace important or useful. I don't know how you then, I mean, the Kinkade one, I guess that is not a dead end, but yeah. I don't know how we
Well, I was just wondering, you know, we're talking about security. I think that's the major concern for the property owners. And just like all the other facades of their buildings, they can lock the entrances. So everything can still be secure in each part of the buildings, and with the walkway open all the time.
Or an alternate to that might be, you know, between 10:00 PM and 7:00 PM, it can be locked if need be. For security reasons. Like, if people live upstairs, they may want to have it locked at night in the dark.
I really want to advocate for that. I wouldn't feel safe walking into one of those four-foot walkways at night. And if we encourage upstairs living, and there will be access to living areas, I think we are all better served if we are able to lock those at night.
I concur, yeah.
Okay, and then, but how do you handle, I mean, business hours is not particularly, we have very limited business hours in town. It's not particularly
Well, just think about the restaurants. Think about restaurants and that kind of thing, you know. So it's closed at 10:00. Yeah, 10:00 or 11:00.
And what time does it open? Do we have a rule on that right now? Are these, is this a universal rule of the timing of the gates?
Yeah, it's on whatever the permit is.
Okay. Well, I mean, personally, I think I think, you know, it's worth, you know, I, folks who've heard me talk for years know that, you know, I'm pretty possessive about the public land. I feel like that's my land, it's our land, and we should be in charge of it. So the question is, if we don't have a rule that's about accessibility through these gifts of density bonuses and sidewalks, we're trading a sidewalk for a bigger building, then, and that it's person by person or property by property, I'm not sure that makes sense to me, because it is a gift of public It's a gift of public amenity, of you're allowing something that nobody else is allowed to do, and then we just sort of do piecemeal. I'm not sure I get that.
If you want to put up gates, you don't get the bonus.
Oh, if you want to put up gates, you don't get the bonus. But don't we want to incentivize the walk-throughs? I mean, it's a tough one.
Just another issue to complicate things. The homeless issue, which we don't have a lot of in Carmel, but I know the post office closed in part because of the homeless issue. And if they're open 24/7, it might encourage people to lodge in there, so.
If you want to lock it, don't get the bonus.
Well, but you have a bonus all the time. I mean, who wants to walk there at midnight? Just, I mean, just practically. And does anybody with good intentions want to walk into these inter-block walkways at midnight? If we want to serve our residential community in town, who walks there at 1:00 in the morning? I think that the residents and the public are still served if they can access that from 7:00 in the morning till whatever 10:00 at night. I think that is a bonus for the public. And to say they can't walk into this four-foot-wide walkway between 10:00 at night and 7:00 in the morning, I don't think that's too restrictive, you know, for an inter-block for the bonuses.
Whatever, you know, is our consensus view, what we've learned from Brandon is that there is no blanket policy on this right now.
I was just double-checking, I don't see anything.
So, and we've talked a lot, these first three items, we're okay with one and two, but intra-block walkways are a sticking point, because we don't think they're defined enough, and we don't, and that includes this hours issue, because we're talking about a gift of rights to, a bonus. And so the public, I think, has a right to determine what the exchange is. Not a private negotiation, maybe, unless, of course, there's a discretionary moment where a planning commissioner or commission says there's something very special about this walkway that merits different rules. I think that's okay, that's what they're there for. But we don't have a rule to push against or to analyze for a project at this point about those definitions.
I think as a resident, I do feel restricted not being able to go to the beach at night. You know, and that's a wide-open space, where I don't think there's major security issues compared to an inter-block walkway that's four feet wide and 75 feet long. So there's a precedent for regulating public spaces and closing it down at a certain hour. I actually don't think why the inter-block walkway should be, you know, exempt from that.
And I disagree, because you're getting an embellishment from the city to add on the number of units you're putting, or the number of square footings you're putting in that development.
But isn't that something you want to encourage?
No, I don't want to encourage taller buildings or larger buildings in town.
Yeah, but
Divinity buildings.
But we just got a mandate to put that much more housing into downtown. How are we going to get that if we don't incentivize developers to do so? And give the public a walkway. So I think that's a good, you know, we need to have as many incentives, I think, as we can think of to have developers at these high property costs and high building costs to come into town and create housing.
I mean, the whole issue of locked and unlocked, I just asked the question, why the heck do we need a gate?
I wouldn't feel safe.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, just avoid it, then. I don't know. I mean, if it's an inner-block walkway, just have no gates. Or if you think a gate is particularly important, leave it open, and just try it and see what happens. I mean, we don't have a huge crime problem here, not to say that something couldn't happen. You know, we don't want to encourage it, but What?
Brandon says we do have a huge crime problem.
Well, I didn't say huge crime problem. Please don't put those words in my mouth, but
She said yes, she said we have a huge crime, she said yes, we do.
No, no, what I was saying is, I don't think that a city like Carmel-by-the-Sea, even though it feels pristine, like, all you have to do is read the police log. We do have serious crimes here. We have violent crimes, we have drug-related crimes. So I think, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, we're downtown Stockton or anything by any means, but it is, crime's a real thing. So I think some of the concerns being brought up about walking in a dark alleyway in the middle of the night are well-founded. Just, all you have to do is read the police logs, I guess, is what I'm saying. I did not say we have a major crime problem, though.
All right. I'm glad you had a chance to clarify. Yeah, so it sounds like we're really divided on this, actually, just the gating issue. Everything else, it seems like, first of all, if we were to gate, folks, I think, agree that that should be a municipal decision. In other words, it should be a general policy. Gates are open, maybe they're closed for a very short period of time, I don't know. But that it's not a piecemeal negotiation, if there are gates. That the public has a right to determine what goes on, because the public has gifted extra square footage.
Is there an element in this decision to encourage walkways to provide access for, in case of fire, for example? Or ambulances? Is that part of the argument or not? Because if that's part of the argument for encouraging walkways, then they should be open, right? Because you have to have access 24/7 for fire and ambulances.
Yeah, and that speaks to residential, you know, units in there, too, anyway.
So the short answer is, let's say you have a residential building that has a locked gate on the front. Anytime you have a gate, there has to be a thing called a Knox box or a similar type of device that fire and first responders all have an access to. So it'd be a similar situation. So the consideration for the inner-block walkways is not a egress issue. The consideration, the reason the inner-block walkways are encouraged in our general plan and our zoning code and design guidelines is that they create a sense of exploration in the downtown area. That's what it talks about. But it's not a safety issue, but that can easily be mitigated, because those things are required by building and fire code.
I think just, I can see where Brandon lands, I can see where Mary Ann lands. I think the people are fluctuating back and forth. I'm just going to, because I'm a citizen, too, I'm just going to say that I'm not afraid of the intra-block walkways at night. I don't, I like to walk around at night and a day every time. I just, I like the freedom of that. I'm Swiss by heritage, we walk all over the place. Everything's open. I know this is America, it's different, but I think, you know, if
I come from a town that has a lot of inter-block walkways just like that, they all close down at night. So it is a long tradition in downtown, European downtowns, where those covered arcades and walkways, they close down at night. It's just
No, no, I'm just saying, it's Switzerland, Austria, it's not
I want to ask Doug, are you saying, because they lock at night, their credit should be taken away? Their benefits should be taken away?
They shouldn't get the benefit if they're going to have the gate.
At night?
Brandon, your walkway, your apartment, you become a partner with the city.
Okay.
You want the city to give you something, you want the city to give you something in exchange for your walkway.
I'm with Mary Ann.
No, I'm with Doug.
Okay, well, I'm just, I was not arguing with you, Mary Ann, about Europe. I'm just saying that that's, my heritage is to have free access. It feels like freedom to me. And if I choose not to go a place that I feel is dangerous, I feel like that's my free will choice as an American. So this is just where I land personally. I'm not arguing about what happens in Europe. But I think Brandon's encouraging me to say this is like a toss-up, and we don't, we might not know what to do here. And I think what it might mean is that we might have to be somewhere in the middle with a, with language where if it is a gated thing, that we get as restrictive as possible about, or as loose as possible about, it's about the access. So that the amount of closed time is minimized. Of course, you know, I don't know that, I don't know if we're going to ever find the exact consensus on this one.
Well, and remember, like, the whole process, the way this works, is that ultimately, these, whatever the recommendation is that comes out of this committee, and when the planning commission makes their recommendations, there's going to be policymakers for the city that make these policy decisions. So this could be one that we just highlight and say, look, we're deadlocked on this one, policy decision-makers. Pros and cons, you make the decision.
Like most things that we've done during this process, we just reach a consensus. And whatever the majority feels, that's what, you know, that's what we should do. But we can highlight, you know, that there was a minority opinion.
I don't know if it's minority, I really don't know.
No, well, all we have to do is poll the committee and just see how the votes land.
That's a good idea.
So we've got, we've got freedom, freedom, freedom. I'm not sure where you are, restriction, restriction, so it's three to five right now on the committee.
This brings up a question about the process that I had. So I'm hoping that Brandon and you will all be able to present, like, a united message at the public hearing or workshop. And so I'm wondering if you're going to take consensus on some of the more difficult issues, so you can say that we've discussed it, and we've come up with a consensus, and this is our suggestion. You know, because there's a lot of things that are still kind of quite contentious, and you have made some sort of agreements on stuff, but I'd just like to know how the process works.
Do you want me to take that one? Yeah, I mean, I, I'm hoping we can actually finish the agenda for today, so I'm going to say that. But the process, I mean, we've talked about that a few times. We'll definitely be coming forward with a recommendation. I mean, it's going to be the steering committee's recommended draft with all the feedback we've received from the community, which is like the larger steering committee. We haven't really, we haven't really landed on how to do that yet. I mean, but yeah, I think the answer is yes. We'll figure out the best way to sort of communicate to the larger community meeting of what the hot topics were, kind of like we just talked about with the inner-block walkways. We highlight that as one, where here's the pros and cons, we didn't have a unanimous decision. Here's where we generally landed, but it's up for debate still. Because remember, this is, this document is not the final of anything. There's still a lot more process to go through. There's more members of the public needing to get involved. The planning commission needs to have input into this, not just deciding on it. They need to actually have input on it, too, which is sort of like the next step. Once we get done at this committee level, then we move it along to the planning commission, where then this group can participate at that level as well. So it's kind of a long, rambly answer, but yeah, don't worry, there's a lot more conversations to come.
And as for consensus, my sense is that actually, there's quite a bit of consensus for, my guess would be like over 95% of what we've talked about. That's my guess, just from being the note-taker here. There are going to be moments, and I think Brandon's basically trying to identify, that maybe this gate issue is a moment. My understanding of the straw poll for the committee is that the majority is anti-gate. That's Melanie, me, and Doug, and that Dawn and Mary Ann agree that there should be some privacy and security at the gates at certain times of day. I'm going to consider that a formal vote, unless, is that accurate? Are we, the accurate representation? So I'm going to say that, at least for the steering committee, we have a majority view that's pro-gate. I'm not trying to push that, I'm just noting it, pin in it, that's what at least, we don't know with the whole committee, it's a very small group today, who knows? But at least we have a position for the steering committee on that. Unfortunately, it's a split view. I wish it were consensual, in either way, frankly. Okay, so let's go to the next one, which is, again, we're still in territory where we're giving recommendations to, so now I'm leaving the ones I left off the list and going back to the main list, downsizing and preservation incentives. This has come up multiple times during the year. It's not necessarily anything that we can, at least, I don't think we've thought of a way to do this through design. Maybe there is a way, this may be purely regulatory. But a way to rec, just a little quick brainstorming moment to see if there's anything we might, in all our wisdom and experience with all these issues, come up with to recommend that the policymakers to consider to preserve our smaller buildings, to downsize if they're considering large, if applicants consider a large building. Is, what kinds of things do you think would appeal to people?
Well, one thing, I remember when we had a vote citywide on 45% lot coverage. And that might be reintroduced down to 40%. When you look at houses being built on these 4,000-square-foot lots, it's hard to believe that it's only 45% of the lot coverage. Apparently it is, but it sure doesn't look like it. So that's one issue, I guess. Another is the Level 2 proposal that's coming before the Historic Resources Board, in which we're looking at which we're looking at incentivizing trying to save some of our smaller cottages, our old, smaller cottages, by lessening the restrictions that historic homes have on them, but giving incentives, and it's the council that really has to determine what those incentives are. And really, in the balance of the success of that program, is how good those incentives are. If they're, they really, you know, make somebody pause about tearing down a cottage, that's great, but it'll depend on, on what the council comes up with. But even, even the concept, if we could include it in the design guidelines, here's this possibility of Level 2, might give people pause about tearing down a cottage, for example. So that's another, and then a third idea might be historic district, extending potentially not just into commercial, but also residential areas. And then a fourth might be charter city, which I know nothing about at this point, but at least that might give us some, some clout, too, for doing that kind of thing. So those are the four ideas I have.
Woody has any other ideas, just Carol?
Thank you for bringing your ideas, Carol. Anybody have ideas on the Zoom room out there? So, so one thing I'll comment on is, I think, I think everything you mentioned was, not everything, but it's sort of a tweaking of the regulation, so going from 45 to 40, for example. It's just a little different, maybe, than, that is different than an incentive, right? It's a regulatory change, to change how big you can build. I think we should talk about that. When I say incentives, or when we talk about incentives in the past, we were talking, I think, more about, maybe it has to do with more undergrounding, maybe it has to do with the speed at which you get your project reviewed, maybe it has to do with the level of scrutiny of your project. You know, how much of a review process do you have to go through? I think if you're, if you're preserving the, the building itself, you could argue that might be another track. You know, if you're actually building, preserving your building, even if it's extensive renovations, it's not the same level of scrutiny potentially as a new building. I don't know. So that seems to me more of an, it's like, those couple that I just threw out are process-based incentives. You know, you could also pay, pay somebody, like cash, you know, I'm talking about, that's a category of incentive, is a process-based incentive. Tax breaks, you know, that's a state issue, I guess, we really don't have any control of that, but that would be more of a cash or financial type of incentive. So I'm happy to, it would be great if people have any incentives that they can think of, and I also want to talk about the sort of regulatory things that Carol brought up. But anything else, this is here because of you, Mary Ann, this, this topic.
From months ago. Yeah, I just want to say that I really want to encourage everything underground. So I think the more that can go underground, and the deeper it can go underground, the better, you know? And, and try, do not even regulate that too much, you know? I think that trees are an issue, you know, that there should be, I don't know if you can regulate how many tall trees one should be able to grow in a property, but short of that, if you have 60%, 16, a couple feet of soil, you can grow absolutely any bush and anything on top of that. So that's, I don't think landscaping in general is an issue at all. As far as I'm concerned, if you have one or two tree wells, I think you should go property line to property line and just give lots of bonuses, so that you'd have a much smaller house on top.
So say more about that, because now when we underground things, we get a square footage increase.
Yeah, it's 100 square feet, it's way too little, yeah. It's just not what, because the cost of going underground does not match the benefit of what you get up, on top, so.
I want to ask Brandon to tell us a little more about the specifics of what we have and the viability of that.
Yeah, I mean, in basic terms, it's you get, you get 100 extra square feet underground, and then it starts counting towards floor area. So you're limited on floor area on a site, you get an extra 100 square feet if you put it underground. That's it. So I think Mary Ann's point is, it doesn't really, the cost of engineering a subterranean space, unless you already, you know, planned on having one, you know, yeah, you get an extra 100 square feet, but it's not an incentive to drive, someone who wants to have their entire property above ground, it's not enough incentive to drive it down if you only get 100 square feet.
It takes 50 years for the stairs to go down.
Right. Which counts towards floor area as well, so yeah, it's, it's not a very good incentive.
So what we really want is some, is basically to say to someone that the more they put underground, the less they put above ground, the more they get to put underground, maybe, like in a sort of different ratio.
I do, it should match. Every square foot you put underground.
But we want, we don't want, yeah, we don't want somebody to...
If you say that, talking, get to it underground.
Yeah, something like that. So what Mary Ann just said, since she didn't have the mic, is it should be that, that underground space, you get more underground space than you get above-ground space, and that basically, if you, yeah, you take, for example, you take a foot away upstairs and you get two feet downstairs. That would be an incentive. What do you think of that, Brandon?
Yeah, it sounds like, it sounds like an incentive. I mean, Mary Ann knows this, and that's why she made her comment about how much dirt you actually need to plant, but there's gonna be a converse argument to this, too, that by encouraging people to excavate, that you're then taking away space for the forest, and healthy forests, and healthy soil and all that. So that has to be balanced as well.
Okay, but we've got an incentive on the table, so that's good. Go ahead.
I just had an idea on that forest thing. So since we have a building setback of 15 feet, it would actually, then, if we leave that building front setback, and say for the back and sides, we, the underground wouldn't have to have a setback, you would always have 15 by 40. You can plant a couple really big, high trees in that, in that first 15 feet. That may be enough overall.
So are you saying, Mary Ann, that the setback, you would permit potentially underground space in rear and side setbacks? That's another incentive, you realize? That's not quite the same, because first one is about quantity. Now you're saying the quality of the thing is you could actually go into the side and rear setbacks. So that is an incentive. I'm writing it down.
So theoretically, if you had a small cottage, for example, and you really want all this for living space, you could go ahead and just lift this thing and move it for, temporarily. You can build out the lot fully, and your laundry, your mechanical, your maybe grandkids' playroom, and all this stuff can go downstairs, and then you can put your little cottage back on top, and then you have a functional house, you know, so.
And we would definitely have to work out the forest issues for that, obviously. So I think that is a real incentive. I think this is what we're talking about, is what kind of recommendations would be willing to give to the policymakers that have to do with, you know, looking at the regulations and seeing what we can do. The other ones I brought up were schedule-based, in a way, like, and I don't, I want to get a read of the room, do people think it's fair to have another, like, a middle level of review? If you're, if you're a preservationist and you're making even major renovations, you are not, but either, either you go first or faster, or you go into a different line, so, because we have over-the-counter review, we have full review. There could be something in between, for example.
Within the Level 2 proposal, I have a whole list of incentives that maybe we could review as suggestions to the council, and one of them is a different fast-track, I called it. And, and so there might be some, a lot of other incentive ideas that we could use, and I'd be happy to send that to you. Okay?
I'm gonna highlight the incentive process.
Yeah, I've cut it down. It's much shorter than it was.
Okay, oh, okay, good. And then let's talk about the actual regulatory things and this appearance of larger than 45%. And I'm gonna ask Brandon again, so one of the things Carol said is that there was talk, maybe in earlier time, that 45% is looking large, and maybe that number just needs to be, we need to consider whether that's too big of a number.
What do you want me to say about that?
Say what you think about the merits of that and the viability of that.
I, well, I mean, if I'm being totally blunt, I don't think that's ever gonna get changed. I mean, I think that you, if it came out that the City of Carmel by the Sea was gonna, you know, the price of land and the value of property, if we were gonna somehow crank that down 5%, I just don't think that you're gonna get that across a, what it takes to get that sort of regulation passed, it seems unlikely.
What if you did a concert, I didn't ask this question, but what if you add a Mary, I didn't ask this question before, but what if you add a Mary Ann provision, which is like, we're gonna, we're gonna give, take with, give with one hand and take with the other? In other words, slightly reduce the above-ground, but we're adding, maybe it's three times, or whatever it is, something very sweet underground, we sweeten the pot, could then, does it have any viability, do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, maybe. I don't want to, I don't want to be the person saying whether things are good or bad. I mean, that's a, that's a bigger policy call. I just, I don't know if the 45% and going to 5% less is really the issue. I think it's more about the design and the massing and how things are being built on the site. I think that's the perception of things feeling big, is how they're being built and designed, not that they're 45%. I don't, I don't know if that's really the issue.
Another consideration in that 40% versus 45 is ADUs. And now, we can cover so much of the lot with ADUs, and I don't know what's coming down the pike in terms of our own ordinances in terms of ADUs, but we're, we're talking at, you know, 3,000 square feet, I think, that can be covered if somebody sticks an ADU on the lot. So, you know, if we, if we looked at something like a formula for, if you have, if you're building an ADU, the increased square footage of the ADU reduces the square footage of the house you can build, that kind of thing, so that it controls at least some of this incredible lot coverage that we're facing in the future.
Can you speak to that, too, Brandon? Just, what, I'm sorry, yes, you can, you can, you can, just about, because you're obviously on top of this, what was required by the state and what we're permitted to do in terms of ADU, and how our regulations intersect with that locally.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go too far down that road, just because I'm not really prepared to talk, you know, specifics about ADUs. We are working on our AD ordinance right now. There is an intersection of where you can start to regulate how much square footage the main dwelling gets versus what's allowed by right, that 800 square feet at the state level. So we do have some balancing that we can do on that, and that's part of what we're trying to work on in our AD ordinance right now. But, yeah, I don't mean, I don't want to be that guy, but we've got 20 minutes, and I, you know, some of this stuff, we're getting pretty deep down into, like, you know, codification and deep policy stuff, that I think would, our time might be better served to finish our list, because we got, you know, the DRB structure thing, I think you guys want to talk about, and then, yeah, but, yeah.
I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna make it. Maybe I'm overly optimistic, go ahead.
Yeah, my biggest concern is, you know, the forest is in very bad shape, and with all the stuff that's coming down, we're getting more and more mass and less room, and I think that's why the woman who brought it up at our meeting months and months and months ago about the FAR, I think we need to be very careful. We don't want to become a village where we only have street trees. And if we're not careful, there's not gonna be room enough on private property for, for our trees. So I just, I think that always has to be in the forefront of what we're thinking about, because if we lose the forest, or it no longer appears like it's a, it's a real forest, or an attempt at a real forest, and maintaining it, we lose one of the most important signatures of our community, and we land up being like some of the other coastal communities, where you see a tree here and you see a tree there, and you know, it's not, it's not a forest anymore. And my, my feeling about, you know, the FAR and so forth, and, and digging deep, is I just care about what's on top of the ground, more than I care about what the heck someone's doing in their basement. And the only thing that would cause me concern is, at least in the area that I live in town, there are quite a number of driveways that are like this, that are totally nonusable for a driveway. They're just retaining walls, and if the people don't live there, they start looking trashy, and they accumulate a lot of garbage. And so if, if we're allowing people to go underground, we have to be more careful about where we design garages and, and how everything works. I mean, the trees have to be, I hate to say it, the most important thing to me on, on the property, keeping the forest alive, and also giving people privacy, because the more density you have on the top, you know, you're gonna have more issues of incompatibility with neighbors. I just ask us, and ask Brandon to, you know, really think about that and help us with, otherwise, the first three principles that we, our guiding principles that we've developed relate to the forest, and housing being secondary to the forest. So that's my spiel.
That's a good spiel. So I, again, I want to point out that for these uppermost items on the list, except for the fake elements that I'd forgotten about, most of this is going to be recommendations to the council in a, I think, a separate, they can't be addressed in the guidelines. So in a separate authored, authored piece, we should lay out some of these things for them to consider. And that brings us to the final thing on the list, which is the DRB structure. We, I think we've had many conversations about this over the year, and what the type of composition it could be, what role it could play. I think we should just, again, having no authority as a design committee, we still can recommend, because we all have a lot of experience with, with having sat on the planning commission, having been before the planning commission, having watched the planning commission, what would help in terms of the review of these projects. Who wants to start off thoughts? Yes, David? Oh, wait, Don? Don was grabbing, I'm giving...
Quiet, Don, let her lie.
The main thing I'm concerned about is the composition of that board, and I think we have to allow the widest net for professionals on that board, meaning not limiting to the city limits.
I spoke with Commissioner LePage after the meeting last night, and I was asking him, because he, he worked on the commission while they had a design review board, I wanted to get his perspective and how, how he liked it. He said it took a lot of workload off of them, and so it was very helpful for, as far as that is concerned. So I think, I don't think it's gonna slow things down too much, although the design review board should probably meet more often, and maybe consider having a member of the design review board meet with the people if they're interested to discuss things before they come before the board, to give them some guidance and feedback, so they're not just, you know, so they're more prepared. And, and I like the idea of widening the net for people, because I know that it's hard to find people to be on boards and commissions, but I'd like it if they had some connection with Carmel by the Sea. Either they had lived here, which is cool, that they grew up here, that they, they have a business here, you know, to have some, some sort of prerequisite, that means that they, they care deeply about how the community evolves.
Is that separate from the planning commission, in addition to it?
Yeah.
I don't have a preference whether there's a DRB or just a planning commission, but I think that what's key for both parties is that there's better training for the planning commission, and there's good training if there's a new DRB, because I think very often I listen into discussions that are, that shouldn't even be discussions, because they are already in our design guideline. There are guidelines, and it sometimes appears as if the planning commissioners may have never read the guidelines, or not gotten kind of a training on the guidelines and the code, and I think that would help a lot in reviewing projects. if the people who are on these bodies are trained properly to serve them.
Well, that kind of, that kind of training was more common quite a long time ago than it is today. But if you go to the planning commission and you know what the guidelines are, and I speak from experience on this, they will listen to you. But initiating is where the problem is. I mean, when you get the staff report, now it's really nice, because the staff goes back to the guidelines. And that's very helpful for the planning commission and also for the public. So, I think that number one, the idea of some training is absolutely necessary. And number two, I think that they definitely should be separated, because the planning commission can't do, because there's not enough time, to do a good job of planning, especially long-range planning, or even current planning. And so, I really think they need to be separated. And the only problem I have with casting a wider net for professionals to be on there is this, they don't get Carmel. And if we, if, you know, if we have people outside the community, we've got you, we've got, you know, Victoria, and, and we have Mary Ann, and I'm sure there are a couple of others. We're not going to have a predominance, I don't think, of architects on this anyway. I think we'd have the most, you know, one or two. I think that the DRB needs to have, you know, a wide range of people and professions, and people who understand something about this, and not all of them are professional. But I think the training is, is one of the most important things that, that we have to do. And I think that's especially true of, of the planning commission. Because some of them come on board, and if, if they don't have a clue as to what's been done in the past, how are they really going to be effective? We're going to get bogged down, like we do now, spending way too much time on a project that if you just read this, it would give you plenty of guidance. But if you don't read it, like if someone hasn't read the general plan, if they haven't read the zoning ordinance, if they haven't, you know, read the design guidelines, well, they're not going to, they cannot be a functioning, a really good functioning planning commissioner. And that'll hold true for the design traditions. So, you know, I think that's important. And I want to make another plug. It has been suggested to consolidate historic preservation with design review. I don't think, in my personal opinion, it's not going to work. They have, meaning the historical resources board, they have a very important charge. And if, and if their charge is done correctly, they should be plenty busy. And if they're not that busy, well, then, then the staff doesn't have to do the work. So, you know, I just think their, their mission is very, very specific and very important for the community, and it needs to be given the fullest attention. And it will not be given the fullest attention if it's conglomerated in with a, with a DRB. We've had a DRB in the past. You know, we know the success of it. And, and if it wasn't successful, then we have to analyze why it wasn't successful, because it's successful in many, many, many communities for the same reason that we are articulating for our community. And so, that's it.
Okay, I'm not sure folks are aware of what important things have come up here. I want to reiterate what people have said a little bit. So, we've mentioned professionals. We've talked about whether, that they should be included and that if it means going outside the village, so be it, but hopefully with a village connection. I think we need to be a little more specific there. What are we talking about when we're talking about DRB professionals? I assume, Don, that you're talking about architects or people, maybe landscape architects, people who have license and training to evaluate design matters. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I think, so you had a five-member board, I think at least two need to be licensed architects.
And what about landscape architects? So, are we saying two, one or two licensed architects and at least one licensed landscape architect? Or are the two positions able to be either landscape or, or architects?
These are abilities, they're not hard and fast rules. Well, that's, that's a good mix, to have a good landscape architect on there.
I don't know how many licensed landscape architects you have in the city of Carmel. I don't know if there's more than one. Oh, wider net, yeah. But there was a lot of talk about not allowing a wider net, so. Well, ideally, you have two architects and a landscape architect, and if it's, and then maybe three or four, you know, citizens, so that the citizens have the majority, basically, but that you have good professional representation. Yeah, I think that might be a good idea.
Okay, so now we're having a, we're adding a topic, which is the size of the DRB. I had just defaulted to five, because everything's five. But are we saying seven? Thank you, Marion. Seven on the table right now, I feel like it's an auction house. Seven, seven members, three design professionals, two of which are architects, one of which is a minimum, or, and the majority, that's three, so four. I don't know if there's any other way to do that, and if people feel that the citizen majority is more important than the professional majority?
I like the idea of seven, because often people are missing. And then you end up with two or three, you know. And I also like the idea of four residents being on the board and with the professionals. And I also like the idea of separating it from the historic resources board, being on the historic resources board. I think we can, even though we aren't terribly busy sometimes, I think we could be more busy. And I'm always throwing agenda items out there. So, I like the independence of those two as well.
Yeah, I really like the idea of making sure that we have the correct professionals to guide people, but having a majority of the citizens, residents, because then I think when decisions are made, people will feel like they, they were represented well. So, there might be less resentments if things are approved that they don't like. Blame your neighbor.
Okay, so the only other thing that I, and we only have a few minutes here, so now I'm just going to highlight one other thing that was said, which is that David mentioned an early meeting with applicants. That is something that the staff does all the time, always has. And that, but what you're introducing is, because you're saying it's a DRB, that makes it a new idea, in my opinion. The idea being that the applicant might have a resource in the membership, this could actually apply to the planning commission also, but that the planning commission and the applicants are encouraged to be in touch prior to coming to the formal meeting. Now, of course, that happens anyway. Applicants call planning commissioners and they advocate or ask questions, and that's a free country and they can do that. That is not a Brown Act violation, as long as you are not connecting the dots between the planning commissioners. You as a private citizen are not subject to the Brown Act. So, unless you're being used to violate the Brown Act. So, that happens. What you're encouraging, David, is, and I'm throwing it out there, because I don't, I don't think it's been done, I want to highlight it, that, that there's almost like, you know, office hours or something, that, that people can approach and get informal pre-advice. And I think Brandon's very nervous right now.
Well, as an example, last night, we were addressing some things, and I said hello to some neighbors that had a project coming up or whatever. And they were like, oh, my gosh, we can't have black and white houses and we can't have metal roofs. What are we going to do? Can you, would you come and look at what we're doing and see if you can help us find a solution so that we present something that will pass? I said, sure, I'm happy to help, you know? So, you know, I think we have a lot of people who would be happy to help. So, I guess that they could come to you and to your staff, of course.
So, I think, I see problems with that, and you definitely felt my nervousness. The reason, the reason I see problems with that is because then you're taking one member of a decision-making body, who then is spending time with people to give them guidance that may not be the same guidance or what they're going to hear in a hearing body. I think it sets a, it's a dangerous place to put somebody, both the applicants and the decision-maker. So, I think that's a staff function, always has been, probably always should be. Because we, we're, we're in the meetings every time with the HRB or the DRB or the PC. You know, we get, we get pretty good at reading the tea leaves. So, that's why we meet with people ahead of time and say, you know, I know you really want this black and white house, but you're going to run into a buzzsaw. And they can either take that advice or not. So, I would suggest not doing that.
And again, what you are proposing is a formalization of something that actually does happen. We know that. I mean, it is a free country, we have a right to speak. And so, people, but, but, right. The question is, should we encourage it or not encourage it, or to stay neutral? And I just wanted to make sure that we discussed that. Melanie?
I think it's totally inappropriate. Yes, yes, because they, and this should be part of their training. They should understand that it gives an appearance of, of a conflict within the group as well as outside, that most people would be too afraid to do that anyway. And for obvious reasons. But, but I think that it undermines the staff, for one thing. And I think that it has an appearance that is inappropriate. And it's kind of, it doesn't have to be said in law, it's just like in the law. There's the common law, and that relates to the appearance of something that you don't want, really want to get into, that's inappropriate. So, I just think the staff's doing the right thing. And I think that it was good of you to bring that up so that we could discuss it, because it does happen. And, and we don't, we don't want to get anybody in trouble and we don't want to get the, a conflict between the boards and the staff. It's totally inappropriate.
Okay. I didn't have a strong view, but I think that it, it's a good topic to check in on, for sure, for sure. So, I don't, now we're, we're about to adjourn, we have future agenda items here. It strikes me that the obvious one is the municipal guidelines. And of course, any other things that we will never tackle in the guidelines, probably, that we've mostly been concentrating on today. How does this committee want to, this is a committee matter, address an appeal to the, the other regulatory bodies about considering these things that will not be part of our guidelines? So, we can do that at another meeting also. That would be my two recommendations. If anyone else, any other agenda items, real quick? Let me just ask, Melanie?
No, not so much that. I just want to remind you, to remind the group about additional things that need to be put in the guidelines.
Oh, oh, good point. Just, just, I think you're saying, just in general, if you are outside of the meeting, and, you know, Brandon and I had pledged to sort of take a go at this now and incorporate in the notes, if you feel like something has been on your mind and you're not sure we heard it, or you are sure we heard it, just put it in a note, send it in, please. It doesn't, picking up, picking up red lines, basically.
I have one item, and I'm not sure if it's in scope or not, but it's about utilities in general. And the concern I have is that I see a lot of beautiful houses being remodeled, and then I see an ugly meter, like an electrical meter in the front, or a gas meter in the front. And I understand that there's a limited kind of influence on PG&E and American Water, et cetera, where they put their meters. But also, there is flexibility. I'm going through that process right now with PG&E. And I realize that there is, there is a way to make things more beautiful. For example, a lot of contractors in the city do not know, according to my information, that you can put multiple utilities in one trench. So, I had to go read the blue book from, from PG&E to figure out how that works. But it is possible to simplify things, to streamline things, to combine boxes and meters, to make things disappear, right? And then we can come up with some guidelines, how to cover that with vegetation. I think that is something I would, I'll be interested in. I don't know if it's in scope or not.
So, once I, Carol, we have addressed a lot, but mostly in the commercial area. So, I think it's worth reminding ourselves that there's stuff to be done in residential area. I'm going to note that down in one second. But also, please write that in, because we, we haven't talked about it that much for residential.
And can we revisit number two, the downsizing and preservation incentives, once we get a fuller list of potential incentives as well? Thank you.
Brandon, a question. Has the contract with Davie for the landscape ordinance been signed? Okay, could I ask that it be held and we have the landscape ordinance on our next agenda? David made a comment, a suggestion at the last meeting. Mary Ann seems bothered by the route we're taking, and maybe we can talk about it.
I kind of, I kind of need to know what the conversation is. Remember, city council said they, they want to be the ones to make the decision, and they kind of took it out of the, the committee, other than like just guidance about what should go in the landscape ordinance. I mean, what, what do you want the conversation to be about? Where we go from here, with respect to like who we choose for the, I don't think that's a committee item. So, I think those would be comments to be made, like when the city council is considering a contract. I mean, not, I'm not trying to say flat out no, but I think we've got so much other stuff that's within the purview of the, of the committee that we can work on.
This was to be on a parallel track with our work. Our work's about petered out, and we have no progress on the landscape ordinance. So, I think it needs, it's a point of discussion.
Yeah, I think you're right. I just have to say this, I know it's not our prerogative. But I, I agree with Mary Ann and I agree with Don. And the other thing that concerns me is to grant a contract to a group of people. I just have a problem with Davie. And I don't know what their relationship was with PG&E in the past, but I know what they've done to the forest, and I have a serious problem with them. And probably no one's going to listen to me about it. But I think that the council ought to look at some of the work that they've done, look at if there's a conflict of interest anywhere, and, and consider somebody who knows more about trees and, and the preservation of trees, and not just a whacking off. And I don't think that they're appropriate for Carmel. Some of the same, they may work up there anyway, I think.
So, maybe what I can do is suggest, uh,
Are we dead?
Well, it's only, it's only Catherine on there, so. What I would do, what I would do is suggest that maybe the chair and vice chair and I sit down and talk about how to characterize that agenda item, because to be totally honest, it's not, it's not the decision of the steering committee of which contractor, you know, whether or not, I know, and I know you recognize that. So, I don't want to take a bunch of time away from the other work that we need to do here. So, maybe we can figure out how best to create that agenda item, because I don't want to spend two hours talking about it. It's a waste of time, honestly.
No, no. But I think it's, it's so, it's so central, that, that you, it's so central to our first three, you know, policies and, and goals for the city. But I think not giving some input, I would love it to be crafted with you, you three, because you'll know how to do it the best, appeal to the council. It's obvious after getting shot down several times by the council that, you know, we don't have a great batting record in relating to them or getting anything under. we don't have a great batting record in relating to them, or getting anything understood that, that, you know, we prioritize. So, I would, I'm really happy for you to do that, and see what you guys come up with, but I.
Let's agendaize it that way, then. Let's agendaize it by assigning it to the three of us, at least for our first pass.
Because I think, Doug, I heard you say like the work's petering out for this group, but I don't think that's true. I mean, we still have a big meeting to talk about, like, we're going to go picture by picture with the guidelines. We're going to, we're going to talk about the oak plane stuff. We got a lot of big stuff still to do. I don't feel like the work's petering out, so I just don't want to get mired in a landscape conversation, because I just don't think that's fruitful, at this point.
But we should talk about it. We'll just at least get up to speed a bit. Go ahead.
Melanie's opinion about the contractor and the discussion is part of the community.
Thank you for sharing it around. Thank you, everybody.